I will call the Southbury Board of Selectmen's regular meeting Thursday, April 4th, 2019, to order at 7:00 PM. Could we have the pledge?
... A people legally certified of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could first have a moment of silence for a volunteer in our town. She was on the Board of Appeals, ZBA, Lorraine Marcantonio.
Jeff, if I can quickly just about Lorraine, if you don't mind, it'll be one second. Lorraine was a friend, and a mentor, and an encouraging voice, and a friendly face to see in the crowd. Sometimes when you're a Democrat in the town of Southbury, you need friendly faces. But she really was a mentor as well, and after almost every meeting, would shoot me a little email that said, "Good job, keep it up, keep going, keep fighting the good fight." But, so thank you for doing that, and I think this town, regardless of your political affiliation, was better off because Lorraine was in it. So, thank you for doing that.
Also, I'd like to offer, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, to Selectmen Bucksbaum, condolences for your loss.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
First up is, after that is public comments. If we have any public comments, please state your name, and limit it till two or three minutes.
Scott Furr? How's that?
There we go. How about that? There we go. Okay, Scott Furr, 124 Southwood Terrace. "I'm here to comment on the letter and public comments by Dr. Ruby Corby O'Neil on 21 March, 2019. First off, I want to thank Dr. O'Neil for bringing these accusations to our attention. In her public comments on 21 March, 2019, she says, and I quote, 'The content of this letter is disturbing. It was a difficult letter for me to write, and I suspect it was a difficult letter for you to read.'" She is correct. It was a difficult letter for me to read, not because Dr. O'Neil is not a good writer. To the contrary, she's a very good writer and gets her point across quite well. After all, she holds a PhD in psychology and is retired, tenured psychology professor. "It was difficult for me to read because I had to wonder, if First Selectman Manville did in fact make these alleged comments, I cannot confirm or deny because I was not there to witness. Why did it take so long for an educated professor in psychology to determine these were anti-Semitic? By her own admission, these comments were made years ago, witnessed by her husband, State Representative Arthur O'Neil. Why did it take Dr. O'Neil years to come forward with this and the other accusations? Was she okay with what was said years ago? What changed? Why does Dr. O'Neil now see the comments were anti-Semitic? I can only infer she did not change her opinion about the comments she allegedly heard years ago. If they were anti-Semitic now, they were anti-Semitic then. I don't question what she heard. Perception is 100% reality to the perceiver. I question her integrity. Her integrity then and her integrity now. If she heard the comments she alleges and did nothing but continue to support the person who made these alleged comments, isn't she complicit in the anti-Semitic behavior she alleges? This brings us to our State Representative Arthur O'Neil. If he, as she alleges, was present, heard the comments and did nothing, is he just as complicit? Shouldn't he, as an elected representative, be held to a high standard? If he did hear the alleged comments, by doing nothing, he condoned the alleged behavior, and I would like to ask that he resign immediately. He, just as much as the person making the comments, is guilty of anti-Semitic behavior. I propose the Board of Selectmen go forward with that investigation. If in fact the First Selectman Manville is found to have committed these anti-Semitic actions that Dr. O'Neil alleges, then take whatever action is deemed necessary by the Board. But along with that action, I would ask that the letter be prepared and signed by the Board of Selectmen, all of them, asking for the immediate resignation of our State Representative Arthur O'Neil for supporting anti-Semitism along with a letter to the State Central Republican Committee and Connecticut GOP Headquarters condemning Dr. O'Neil's complicit actions supporting anti-Semitism in the town of Southbury over the past few years. Full disclosure, I don't believe there were any anti-Semitic comments made by First Selectman Manville before he was a selectman. I have known the Manville family and Jeff Manville for over 17 years, and I have not witnessed any of the anti-Semitic behavior alleged. This smells like a political payback attack for not supporting Dr. O'Neil in her unsuccessful bid at the Republican Political Convention. Lest you think the O'Neils are sitting around waiting for this to play out, Representative O'Neil has introduced a bill, HR 5041, to eliminate the requirement for political parties to hold state or district conventions. This would eliminate the mechanism by which the Republican Party did not support his wife in her bid for the Republican nominee for the 5th District. I can only assume she will mount another bid for Congress. I guess we can further discuss her integrity then. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hi, good evening. Shannon Bertram, 295 Weston Hook Terrace. As a disclaimer, these are my comments this evening, reflecting solely my own opinion and not that of my husband, Selectman George Bertram. I find the allegations of anti-Semitism levied against First Selectman Jeff Manville by Dr. O'Neil during the March 21st Board of Selectmen meeting quite peculiar. My primary question is, why has it taken years for her to come forward and voice her complaint? What motivated her now? Selectman Manville has been in office a full two-year term and is now another year-plus into his second term. If she were concerned for this supposed behavior, why not speak up prior to his first term? What changed that motivated her to spew these collective vignettes of perceived anti-Semitic behavior, some dating back six years or more at this time? It makes me wonder, is it a vengeful act for her lost bid for the 5th District? Or is it perhaps something more current? We are headed into another election year, and if one is thinking of challenging the incumbent, how better to gain advantage than to publicly smear ahead of a primary? It's very curious indeed. I will say this, actions speak far louder than words. This is a multi-denominational Board of Selectmen. You all have worked with First Selectman Jeff Manville for the last three years. There have been opposing debates of numerous issues related to the town during that time. I've attended the majority of these meetings, and I have never once seen Selectman Manville disrespect any of you during those most trying discussions, even when he whipped stood disrespectful comments and barbed disrespectful tones and barbed comments. And yet he has always turned the other cheek. So these actions alone discredit Dr. O'Neil's allegations. In closing, I will excerpt from her own words, "We cannot trust those who address petty disconnect, discontents politically." Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll close that portion of our meeting. You have your announcements and correspondence in your packet. From there, we'll move on to a consent agenda. Have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll say it.
Made in second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Call vote? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Abstentions, and it carries. Minutes of March 21st, 2019, regular meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, and it carries. Business procurements on the international trucks are in front of you. John is here, if you would like him to, if you have any questions.
I'm just, I know we're buying it from a cooperative that the Board of Selectmen previously approved a number of years ago, but I'm just curious how we came to that determination to do it in that manner rather than issuing an RFP and sending it out to bid.
We're looking for keeping our fleet with the international fleet. Our service has been very supportive of our fleet for the international trucks with the local vendor. The truck we would spec out to put out for a bid would be similar, would be the truck that we have based on this NJPA quote. So then you're really competing against other international dealers. So we're just going through the NJPA for that.
Good. Any other questions?
Why are they so expensive?
Yeah, they're really expensive.
It's just a lot of money for a truck.
Half a million.
Can't you just buy an F-150 and...
You buy five.
There's a large demand on the trucks, and nowadays, there's so much technology packed into them. You're going with stainless steel bodies so that they're not rusting out on you. You're going, this is a tandem axle versus in the rear versus just a single axle so we can carry more load. We have tanks on there for liquid nitric oxide to add to it. That's a 330-gallon tank. Your emissions to meet modern emissions requirements adds a lot more technology into it.
The new, the new engine, frankly, the new engine technology with the depth technology of clean air, it really added a lot of money to heavy equipment, trucks, everything, it was quite a bit. So there has been an increase. But we're hoping with these bigger trucks to be more efficient in our plowing routes and the capacity to carry the salt and not have to make so many trips back.
So these are bigger than the trucks where they're replacing?
Yeah, the ones that we're replacing are six-wheelers. These are 10-wheelers, so it has the dual tandem axles.
That's a lot more carrying capacity.
Carrying capacity, a lot bigger engine.
How much more salt can they carry with them?
Oh, man. I don't have the...
He's a salt guy.
It's a 60,000 gross vehicle weight versus a 40,000 gross vehicle weight.
So it's like 50% more perhaps?
Yeah.
With the extra axle.
So less trips back to the salt mine.
But how many more mailboxes are going to get carried?
You could take out the whole house.
Should it have like a mailbox sensor so you can hit them?
I'd decline to answer.
Okay.
Unbelievable.
Can, we have a motion under resolution?
I'll move it.
Second.
Made in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, and it carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Unfinished Business Economic Development Director. Just so you know, we've been interviewing. We've had one interview, we have two more Tuesday, people coming in, and that's moving forward. Just so you know, we're working towards it.
Just curious, how many resumes did you get in your interviewing? Apparently, three people out of how many?
Right now, three out of, some people have already taken on another position. There was quite a few, I don't know the exact number, but a lot of the applicant, applicants were new, people who really had no experience. I don't want to say, I think they're looking, you know, put out your resume, put out your resume, new, somewhere new out of college, and, you know, we were discussing this with Ron Paglis, that contacts is a very important part of the economic development. Justin, you were, you know, that's what we talked about. So, we want to keep looking and make sure we get, you know, a person with his contacts.
Who's involved in the interviewing process?
Ron Paglis, Justin, myself, John Riley, and Ann Arminio.
That is, thank you.
Okay?
Thanks.
EMS Committee, Mike?
So, we had a very good meeting. I shared with the full members of the Board of Selectmen a draft ordinance last week or this weekend. Received feedback from one of you, Selectman Bucksbaum, regarding that. This already had the general agreement of Selectman Naylor and Selectman Betty and I. It was an ordinance that was put together with input from SAA and HVA, and they are open, open to it. The comments from Selectman Bucksbaum were relatively minor. There were some conversations and some email communication and even a question from us of, should this be an ordinance? Can it just be a resolution? Selectman Bucksbaum suggested, and I would agree, is that, well, it doesn't necessarily have to be an ordinance. An ordinance would, would put it in right, for lack of a better phrase, make it easy to find, and, and really solidify it, for lack of a better phrase. So the question I guess we have at this point is, one, have you guys had a chance to review it yet? Do you have any input on it? And, George and Jeff. And two, I'd like to move it forward, be it at this meeting with the recommended, recommended suggestions from Jason, or be in agreement that at our next meeting, we will have a final version for us to see that if it is an ordinance, I believe, would have to be posted for the public to see. You know, with the caveat that June 3rd, June, the next meeting, early June, is the next scheduled meeting of EMS. Part of the new ordinance would bring on some new members. I still think we'd potentially have time to have it formed and in place by that first meeting. That's been our goal all along. So...
Mike, if I'm, I'd ask, I would like to simultaneously send it off to Town Attorney?
Yes.
And have him review it and let him maybe make some comments so that by, we can have a productive discussion at the next meeting.
And we had some questions that were in there. You know, we do think, one of the, one of the conversations that did come up is, and we don't want to delay, we, this can be a second step, is for future considerations, should we consider forming an emergency service, Emergency Services Commission incorporating fire and police versus one solely focused on EMS? A couple of questions regarding the specifics. So we do believe potentially that with dispatch being such an intricate, detailed part of EMS, should they potentially have someone at the table? Who would that then be? But those are, you know, those are really the bulk of the questions. Jason answered some of them. There are certain procedural things we don't believe need to be, would not need to be in the ordinance because they're in the charter. They're consistent across the board. But beyond that, you know, I think we are, we're pretty much there.
It's something to talk about.
Yeah.
So I'll just, I'll just share my comments, where I forwarded comments to Jennifer and Mike to avoid a, just so they had, yeah, so they, so, so that they had them because I knew they were working on it, but I wanted to avoid a quorum and a discussion. So, my comments primarily were, the draft that was circulated talks about members from SAA and Heritage Village, and one of my thoughts was, instead of calling out specific organizations, should we instead call out organizations that have PSAs within the town? Because as they change, or, you know...
If there's a name change.
A name change, whatever, so you sort of, you're covered, you don't have to redo an ordinance every time you do that. My other question was, should the ALS provider be involved in some capacity? Currently, it's Campion, but again, you know, can define it more generically, maybe in an advisory role or some other role. I know when we had our EMS plan meeting, we had Campion present, so, and I'm not sure what their current role is with EMS Committee, but I wasn't sure if they should somehow be involved in this process at some level. Mike already talked about the ordinance for its resolution, and the only other comment I had was just on some verbiage, like there's a whole section in here on resignations and, you know, how you fill positions and all that, and that's all dealt with in our charter. So, to keep it uniform, I would just not have any of that in here, and, you know, we just deal with the charter for appointed bodies. But those, those are my general comments.
Thank you.
So, so taking the, would be generic to say, mem, regular, one regular, regular member and one alternate member of ambulances, ambulance services, of any ambulance services in town. Would that be generic enough to...
Owning a PSA, maybe?
Well, without the, I mean, it's an ambulance service function, and if something happened where there was another ambulance service, it's in or, I don't know.
Well, then you're having Campion have a vote. Do you want Campion to have a vote?
That's true.
Right? So we kind of...
I think it's regarding the PSAs. It's specific to the PSAs.
Because, you know, there's like mutual aid and stuff too, so there's a lot of ambulance organizations that probably operate in town, but we don't necessarily need them to be a part of...
And I think the intent, the intent, Jason's intent, and correct me if I'm wrong, isn't that we don't think it's going to be SAA or HVA, but if they change their names, or if they merge at some point, or if something else happens, we have to go back into the ordinance and change it again if we keep it at a high-level generic. We don't have to worry about that.
Well, I don't know if it changes, I mean, I understand your concern, but changing the ordinance, how difficult would that be if it was...
It's not difficult to change the ordinance.
Yeah, it's not difficult.
No.
Yeah.
But I was just wondering if we should caption. My, I guess the question is, we name Southbury Ambulance and Heritage Village Ambulance in this draft ordinance. I assume the reason we named them is because they have PSAs within the town.
That is correct.
That is correct.
So that...
Well, we just leave it, yeah, we have to change it. We'll just change the ordinance.
I'm fine, we're fine either. I mean, we were clearly fine with it, with it being named, but, you know, I thought it was, it was a reasonable suggestion.
So, no, we're not going to do it.
So, at this stage, to Jennifer's point, I think we should send it off to Town Council.
You know, with, you know, certainly I'll forward on to you, Jeff, Jason's, or Jason, or Jeff, Jason can. Forward on the comments he sent just to, just to us to...
Consideration budget.
An email quorum.
We'll do it.
And get it off there. I'd like to be in a position, I know there's some question about whether our meeting in two weeks is going to happen, because of schedules, which we're going to talk about, because of holidays, et cetera, and vacation. But I'd like to try to be in a position that, whether it be that meeting on the 18th or the next one, that we can move on it, and then move quickly to hopefully, you know, fill the, some of it's easy, because we know who those folks are. But they, it's really the public part of the, of the commission, the citizen.
Okay, so get that.
Good.
I just forwarded my email to you, so.
And you have...
I did review this, and I didn't have any particular problems with it. I think Jason's comment about getting Campion involved is a, is a positive thing. I think they probably should have a voice in this whole process. The other thing I thought is, it might be good to open this up to a forum for public comment and discussion there, just to get any other ideas. This is so important for the town and the people and the residents in this town that maybe it's a good idea to have a, a more open session for ideas to come in and comments. I don't know. Not that I had any particular negative things to say about it.
I, I agree, and I guess the question would be timing that. The process for an ordinance is, once we, once we agree on the language, they have to publish, you need notice and publication of, I think it's a summary of the ordinance, like telling people what we're going to talk about, and we have to have a public hearing as part of the ordinance process. So that what we're doing would get published in the newspaper and wherever, in an email blast and whatnot, and then we would have a public hearing at our, one of our meetings, inviting people to come and talk. That's the ordinance process. We could also just, we could also just schedule, you know, to Mike's point, since we're not going to have this draft until, you know, May, we could just notice something for our meeting in May and let people know, hey, if you have comments on this, come...
Yeah, I think we want, we'd love to, but I, I do also want to be cognizant of the time constraints and the fact that we've been a bit, and, you know, we'd like to, you know, we'd like to finalize things.
We've had great success having reach, outreach to the community. Board of Ed, prime example. I mean, anything less would be bad. I agree. Should do it.
Okay. Makes sense. Hopefully we can work it out to the next meet. I mean, I'll let you guys work out the logistics of it.
Yeah, I'm not sure a separate public, I don't know if we need to have a night of public hearing for something.
Maybe just that one.
We should be able to do it at a meeting.
I think it could be done at a meeting. You just notify people that at this meeting, we're going to, you know, if you have comments on that.
And we'll, we'll accept a limited-time comment on, on, I don't, you know, just...
No more than 30 minutes.
No more than 30 minutes.
Per person.
This is important, so, but thank you all, and to my two colleagues on the Board of Selectmen and to Carolyn and George for the time. I think we made, we made very good progress.
Very good work. Okay, real set. River Road property, I am, we're working with LOF and we're looking for a licensing agreement. I've asked the, our town attorney to draft a license that would work, and we'll move forward with that.
Will that come to us? Do we have to...
Yeah, yeah, once we get the...
And I, and they've been, they're very grateful for moving along, so.
Government moves slowly. We're there, we'll get a license.
Let them know.
All right?
Sounds good.
Has, has there been discussions with First Light and how that would all work on their end?
Yeah, there's been some correction on clarification of what is FERC property, what is First Light flood area. We've got back from Brian Wood, and get that up there and get that all for the agreement, the licensing, correct.
Good.
All right?
Great, thank you.
Okay, Southbury Ambulance Association was on the agenda.
They're never on the agenda. I don't know why we're talking about them.
So, I have a question. Has, what's the, the status, Jeff, to your point of view, both, I'd just like an update because we haven't actually, we haven't actually talked about it in detail for a while, both on the Southbury Training School area PSA, which we had all agreed to and voted on last meeting, two meetings ago?
Yeah.
To, that we, that the town had agreed to support their SAA's application, including all the required accoutrements of that support, a letter, et cetera. Has that been done? What's the status of that?
Yeah, that's all been done.
And then the second is, where are we at with, with the medic upgrade application? We all did receive an email from, from John Michaels and the Board of Finance and from Dan, from Dan Colton, that it seemed to be a settled matter with the Board of Finance. They seemed satisfied. Dan provided us information that, that ultimately things seem to pan out. Per his original analysis and presentation he made, it was at the high end of that analysis, but it was in the range of the, I think we initially said 30,000 to 60,000. It looks like it's closer to 60, but which was all a number that I think we, in our discussions, had felt was within reason. So I just want to get a sense of what's the status of our supporting SAA's application for the upgrade.
Dan, you've had, been in, we've discussed, we can...
Right under the bus.
Join us, join us. No, no, you saw the report on, on that. It's just a matter of whether, whether it makes sense to the Board from a financial standpoint or whatever, whether you want to do the MIC upgrade. You know, there's some expenses that we've been talking about with that. I mean, it's, and there's the question of whether, how the Board feels about if there's a MIC upgrade and there's a ambu, a paramedic in town for the town of Southbury and a flycar, and what that, what that is going to cost, are we still going to be paying the same amount of money for a flycar paramedic for Heritage and, Heritage area, Heritage Village? And that's, obviously, it is a different level of service, so. Then we talked about what you expect the cost to be the same, and we don't know what's going on with Campion at this time.
We don't know yet what Campion has to contract with in June.
Yeah, I'll come up to the mic.
We did look at, one of the things that Jeff Ziplo looked at was the cost of the potential loss of reimbursements to the town. And when I first did my analysis, it was $40,000, I think, and after Jeff did his, I think it was closer to 60. So that would be something that we'd have to just think about. Other than that, I mean, I reviewed the Southbury Ambulance provided me with the 2016 and 17 order of financial statements, and there was nothing in there that I could say was major issues that we, the town should be concerned about.
So I think the other question is, does, do you, do you want to put out an RFP for in-town paramedic for the entire town 24/7?
The, the big thing, Jeff, is what we heard from Campion, was that they, for them to reduce the contract, it has to be a major change in the contract. So we would probably have to put together some sort of an RFP to, to have the backup paramedic to Heritage and backup Southbury Ambulance, wouldn't it?
But that would be unrelated to potent, that would be, it would be related, but it's separate from the, from our support or lack of support of, of the application for the medic upgrade from SAA. If it is a substantive change, and we've talked, we talked about that, if it was a substantive change to the service that we were, we needed, that we likely would have to put that out there.
Yep.
Campion could choose to or not. Campion could choose to or not to bid on it again, and what those numbers are, we don't know, you know, we, we'll find out then.
And in the Campion contract, there's a ninety day out either party.
Yeah, which we put in.
They could come to us and say they don't wanna work.
Both of us can. It's a mutual, it's a mutual out. So the question, the Board of, the message specifically from the Board of Finance, which was one of the, which was one of our major stumbling blocks, right, was there were some concerns about transparency on finances, there were some concerns even amongst us, you know, amongst this conversation here amongst us, about the financial viability of SAA's ability to, to, you know, to move forward on our own. The Board of, from, from John Michaels, our, you know, our Chair of the Board of Finance, SAA has sent the town all, all their net collections on ALS billing. The BOF inquiry into this is satisfactorily concluded. Is satisfactorily concluded. So the Board of Finance, in my eyes, has signed off on this. So, you know, from a financial perspective, which is their responsibility, we had gotten to a point where I thought that if the Board of Finance had been satisfied, that this was a financially sound operation, and the potential net loss to the town wasn't any greatly, you know, different than what we had been told initially, that they were okay with it. And we were okay with it. So my question is, are we ready, are we ready to move forward? Is there a process that we should put, be discussing? Should we put the RFP out first before we do that, so we get a sense of the numbers? Those are all reasonable things to discuss. But what I don't wanna do is continuing delaying for the sake of not being willing to make a decision. And, you know, this was the big thing we were waiting for. We, you know, we, we were hope, we started this, this part of the conversation started in January. I think it was our first meeting in January, but Dan gave his initial inquiry and said, I needed a little more time, and it took a little longer. But now we're here in, in April, three months later, and we have that answer. And the answer is positive, that, you know, it's been, we've gotten that sign off. So where, I ask my peers here, where are we? Each of you.
So for me, what I think we should know, or should put an RFP, what I'm hearing from citizens in the board is that everybody would like to have a, an in-town, a paramedic in town available twenty-four hours a day. That's what I'm hearing. My suggestion would be to go out for an RFP for a paramedic twenty-four hours a day in town, to see what that cost is with, with a backup paramedic available for them. That would be my suggestion, to know what it is to give the, all the people in Southbury the same level of paramedic service, and then we will know what that cost is and whether that's a consideration. Just my...
My two cents? My two cents is, if we support the medic upgrade now, we don't have any idea as to how long it's going to take the government to give them the authority to do it. So, A, I would support the medic upgrade. I would ask that we do that tonight. And secondly, I would ask that we form this new EMS committee and charge them, as we have in our draft ordinance, to come back to this board with a recommendation for going out for ambulance services or costs that we have to purchase under contract.
Contracts.
And some of these things can be happening simultaneously. Had we have done the analysis that we wanted two years ago, we would be a little bit further along. But we have delayed the process, and the ambulance folks have given their assistance and openness with their records. We have asked them to do things, they have done it. Personalities came into play and delays happened, and I think it's personally time that we move forward.
Anybody else?
I have a concern that if we give Southbury Ambulance essentially, you know, a sixty thousand dollar subsidy to do this, does that violate our bidding process rules? I mean, are we giving them something without opening up that bid to other people to provide a similar service? It kinda gets what, to what you're saying, is like you're thinking about opening it up to a wider audience to bid on a different service, and, you know, I kind of agree with Jeff that it would behoove us to try to figure out a way to get the same coverage for Heritage Village that, that Southbury Ambulance is wanting to provide for the town. I mean, I'm very pleased to see that the financial review of Southbury Ambulance has come back clean and that, that's no longer an obstacle. That's a very, very positive step, but I think there's more to be considered here than just, you know, our warm feelings for Southbury Ambulance for all their great service over the years. And I, I think they deserve consideration, but I think we have to look a little bit beyond that and look at what's really best for everybody in the town.
So regarding the bid policy, we've had multiple meetings with town council about this. I believe if he had concerns regarding it violating the bid policy twelve years since we've been talking about this, or however long it's actually been, he would have brought it up. He would have raised those concerns. So I, I don't think that really is an issue. I think town council would have raised that, and we trust in his recommendations and advice, and I don't believe that ever had been raised at all. There were many other issues raised, that was not one of them. Regarding the, you know, for lack of a better phrase, the equal service concern, you know, our friends from Heritage Village Ambulance are here, George is here as well. He's spoken publicly, they, they have no concern regarding, regarding that service. They serve and have served for quite a long time, the people of Heritage Village. I believe that as the experts in providing emerging medical services to that community, that subset of our community, our residents, if they do not share that concern, why would we share that concern? We are being told by our experts that they have no concern. And I go back to having to trust in the people who have served our town for a long time, and it's not just about a feeling of warmth, because clearly there has been some who do not have feelings of warmth. I mean, we've had good, healthy discussions about this, but at this stage, this far into it, I don't believe this board supporting the mega to upgrade puts us in any compromising situation otherwise, because we can always still go out to bid. You know, we are, we can, we can go out to bid for the, for, whether it be a Campion or, you know, one of the other many providers in town who, who could provide that service, and then be supportive of SAA and their ability to do their, I'm not gonna say it, their pro walk one plan, I'm gonna say it, to, to provide the, that twenty-four seven, three sixty-five service that they want to provide and intend to provide, and have the financial viability to get there. So I, I would certainly, you know, support Silicon Naylor's, you know, desire to move this forward today. I think we've waited long enough. We've been extraordinarily considerate, to a point, I think, a little bit of ad nauseam about this, but I, I'd be, I'd be prepared to move this forward today.
To the Heritage Village point, George is here, so can we just hear from George on that?
I'll recognize George.
Good evening.
It's on.
It's on. Thank you. We, at Heritage Village, and I thank, thank you for the opportunity to input. We've supported this in, in operation and in theory from the get-go, because I think that it's, it's the basis for the eventual integration in the town of Southbury of a homegrown paramedic service, which is an expensive proposition that's not currently supported by the total call volume of all three PSAs. And I think that's been established. It is expensive. We have a timeshare arrangement. Our company in the village, by virtue of our being, we are in the village, we have an under-six-minute response time at this time. And by the time the paramedic does arrive, whether it's an intercept or whether he came from town, the same tasks must be accomplished. And so there are two parallel services for the time being, which minimizes the impact, by the way, on town's revenue. And, and I think that experience will show that the impact projected at this point with respect to Mr. Colton and his folks will be quite a bit less than, than projected, because there's things that's inside baseball. But I think that the citizens like the idea of it, so do we, and I think it's a way to grow into it. Running a paramedic is a complicated responsibility to take on, do compliance and so forth, and against the day when our growth supports that, I think it's a good thing. I would not be standing here recommending something that would jeopardize the service enjoyed by my thirty-eight hundred residents, but I thank you.
What about the point that has been, yeah, what about the point that's been made regarding if there is a, if there's an upgrade to SAA, and if all goes well over the next couple of years, and they then, they then have a fly car medic in town? Presumably that fly car medic would be covering SAA's current territory and hopefully STS as well, depending on what the state does with that, but not Heritage Village?
No, in a fly car scenario, it's a different model. And again, I, I don't wanna get bogged down in inside baseball in, in this timeframe, but I, I see your, your point. And if we graduate to a fly car model, then you would presumably have an RFP out there anyhow, and that would be the, a decision from the EMS committee and/or the, you know, the town entity. And a fly car would give us the same flexibility. I don't think that the four or five minute difference is physically being there. It takes basically eight or nine minutes to get a patient in the ambulance. So the paramedic could arrive that much sooner and then help to lift, but as being a paramedic, he doesn't get to do all his nifty paramedic stuff until the basic assessment is complete, whether he does it or whether we do it and we have it for him when he steps onboard. So the time differences there don't tell the whole story. They don't on, on an ALS call.
So I think that was the basic explanation we got about recommending a fly car paramedic originally.
There's a significant difference in expense, though, to Southbury at this point.
Yeah, they don't get their, there's ABC that you need to do before a paramedic can even perform what they're able to.
There's another advantage to this, which I, if I may, I would point out. When we at the EMS committee did the original evaluation of the paramedic bids on the contract, a significant factor in there was the coverage for Southbury for a second paramedic. And the question came, well, how often does that occur? And for the year in question, it was a hundred and eighty-eight times. Now, with the arrangement that's under discussion right now, the second paramedic provision would occur if I'm already on a call with a Campion paramedic, now there's a second call in the village. And if it is an ALS call, they would be there to cover that. So that's a hundred and eighty-eight times, or it's probably more than that now, because under the mutual aid, we are back and forth quite a bit. I'll be out on a call, they'll come in and cover me. They go out on their next call, and if they go, as we say, too deep in the town, which frequently happens, yes it does, depending on what's going on in eighty-four. And ambulances get tied up on NVAs for extended lengths of time, sometimes, accidents, I'm sorry.
So based on that, there would be circumstances in which the medic...
That would be a transport unit coming in along with the medic, which is fine, if it's a transport, they, they would be doing that anyway, you see? And when we need a second call in the village, if it, and it is, and it looks like an ALS call, Campion provides a second paramedic, they're coming in, at that point, Southbury could dispatch of the two cars they have, presumably at the time, would send their ALS car in.
Sure.
Why not? So that second paramedic for all those times would be Southbury at that point, yeah. So I mean, it's, it's hard to, until, until you're in, in the middle of the operation, and we've extended the offer, including to Mr. Michaels, come, come ride of a shift, show you how it works. We'd be glad to do it.
What happens when, what happens when there is an ALS call from Heritage Village, the SAA medic is not out on a call? The Campion, you know, we always have Campion available. Under that scenario, where that is now, at that moment in time, the only ALS call in the town of Southbury? And let's say SAA is five minutes away from Heritage Village and Campion is fifteen minutes away from Heritage Village. Under that scenario, would SAA, would their medic on the vehicle come to Heritage Village, or would we still be waiting for Campion to come?
Well, I think, again, with respect, we don't wait for the paramedic. We don't.
I'm talking for the paramedic services, that you're just...
Well, no, but I mean, that's, it's all part of the synergistic way in which the different services, in this case, I mean, the paramedic and the fly car paramedic and the call. If you go to your doctor's office today, before you get to see the doctor, there's four or five number of things have to be done before the, and usually today by a nurse. Those of us who are old enough to remember, the doc would look at you, have a conversation, take your blood pressure, and tell you, you need to lose weight. But these days, it doesn't work like that. The resources are optimized. So you need to do an assessment regardless, and that's what's going on while the paramedic is inbound. The whole idea is to be ready, and a lot of times, we will cancel a paramedic in that case, because we say an ALS call. The ALS call's determined by the crews on scene, and it has nothing to do with dispatch, but dispatch's information and that initial classification is really only as good as the information the dispatcher gets over the phone. And it's not the highest quality, I'm afraid, you know? It's a lot of circumstances, intoxicated people, uninformed people, passersby that thought they saw this, that, and the other, and the reality turns out to be something different. So you do, in an overabundance of caution, you dispatch a paramedic. Yes, you do. And in the event that it isn't really needed, they can be canceled and that paramedic's available for the next call.
But I do think to...
Yeah.
To, to make it, to bring clarity to Jason's question.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I think, and tell me if I'm wrong here. I think Jason's question is pretty simple, actually.
Sorry?
His question is if, if it is, if determination is made, that a medic is needed for a call.
Yeah.
Whether the BLS has taken five minutes or ten minutes to get to that point, is regardless of the point, you know, you're doing your ABCDs, going through the process.
Right.
And tell me if I'm right here. One ambulance service, not SAA, it could be Campion, it could be someone else, if we ended up doing an RFP, their ambulance may be in Newtown, it may be in Danbury, their medic may be in Newtown or Danbury or somewhere else. Whereas if SAA's, you know, medic is not on a call, they're sitting on South, on George's Hill Road, you know, five minutes from, from the village.
Right.
And I think the point is, who gets that call? Will, would SAA provide?
Sure.
You know, mutual aid provider, since they're closest, would they be there first?
It is, it is. A state law.
Campion or whoever we have a contract with.
Exactly. But it is a state law to dispatch the most appropriate service available and the closest, absolutely. That, and that would be the dispatcher's call at that point, sure.
Can we hear from Carolyn on that point as well? I, I mean, I don't mean to cut you off, George, if you have a follow-up question.
Carolyn, are you?
Well, yeah, go ahead. I can ask my question later.
Welcome back.
I missed you all so much.
You did. Jason, you have a...
It's only been a couple of days.
You have, do you wanna ask?
The cop, I, I know what the question is in this scenario, and it's, and it's a good, it's a good question. The complication, what George said is right, the closest, highest level that you need should be the one dispatched. should be the one dispatched, dispatch can make that call. Then you get into the other areas of the laws and regulations that we have to follow. PSAs, George's PSA, his ambulance is there, I have the medic, he doesn't have the medic. My ambulance goes to Heritage Village, we want to transport. You don't transport, you don't get paid. So my medic is not really going to be able to get into his truck. My medic's going to work with his or her partner and, and do the call. But those are logistics that we could work out, just like how the dispatch would work, how, you know, it's not going to be Campion's and Southbury ambulance racing the one call. That's why the regulations are, are the way they are, and that's why, how PSAs came into the picture, to prevent that. I mean, you've all watched Mother Drugs and Speed, I guess, because it's, maybe we're that comment came from, but if you haven't, you have to watch it.
Okay.
I don't know what that is.
Because, because that's what, how it used to happen, George. Everybody would race. So what would happen here in Southbury, for those antiques that have met, were around, Waterbury Ambulance and Campion Ambulance and Danbury, they would race to a call. And, you know, the volunteers that, you know, I would be home sleeping at two in the morning and, you know, we, just like the fire guys do, and we don't do that now, but some services still do, and of course, the commercial services are staffed 24/7, they would beat you to the call and they would take the call. But 20 years ago, we weren't forced to bill for our services. You know, when the medic came to town, we agreed to, to become a billing service, to be able to not be a burden to the town.
So why is there no racing going on? Is it because?
Because the regulations assign PSA. So if you come into my area, if a commercial services takes a 911 call at my PSA, they'll lose their license. It's that stern.
But they've also put in place rules that make it, you, in other words, if it's your PSA, you can't just take 20 minutes getting there. There's, they're also, by giving the PSA, they put some regulations that made sure you were covering your territory too. So it's, you know, they do have a lot of responsibility that they have to meet.
So when does the call go to the ALS provider, in his case, Campion? So you have to go to a call, and then you make the call to ALS?
No.
Or do you know ahead of time that you're going to need it?
No, emergency medical dispatch, also requirement by law. So they have an algorithm they have to follow. So Susie Smith calls up and says, you know, I need an ambulance, the dispatcher says, you know, what's the issue? And, you know, I don't know the exact words they use. Okay, you know, I'm having bad chest pain, I'm 82 years old, do you have a history of heart problems? Verifies the address that comes up on the caller ID. So she now knows, heart, difficulty breathing, uh?
So it's automatic when the call, call goes through?
Typically, right.
Yeah.
Now, the dispatcher's evaluating the resources sent based on that phone call. And that's where you get the downgrade or the upgrade.
So the dispatcher will make the decision whether it's you or Campion that goes to the call?
That's correct, by a set protocol. They don't get just to say that I'm sending you to this one because I like you today and I'm not going to send you when that's your area. They have to follow.
Sure, there's rules.
Right, there's rules.
Jason?
So let me ask the same question in a different context. From the beginning, I've said that the reason to do this is not to get a medic on your transport vehicle today. The reason to do it is for your, like, three-year goal. Because it's then when we really achieve what the town wants, 24/7 in-town paramedic. And it's at that point in time that the town would realize some savings from this investment. So under that scenario, three years from now, if all goes well, your plan is still that you would want to have a fly car medic in town that SAA is operating? Is that?
Correct.
That's my understanding, right? With a backup?
I don't know if I ever said anything about a backup, but let's see where the town is in three years.
Okay, well, but a fly car medic in town, okay. So now, the same question three years from now, SAA is now operating a fly car in town with the medic, not on your transport vehicle, so not the issue of showing up and who's going to transport. If there's only one call that needs ALS services in the town at a particular hour and it comes from Heritage Village, will the SAA fly car medic cover that call if that medic is closer to the call than Campion?
So as long as nobody owns that paramedic PSA, I believe the same way that one paramedic covers the three PSAs today will, will prevail.
If the town's a decision.
Right.
We go with that.
So part of the EMS plan is, you know, the discussion, town fathers with the providers, and we agree on, hey, look, no sense to having this service now, you can do this. So that's, we'll go back to the crawl, run statement.
You understand the issue that's been raised, right? That's what I'm trying to?
I do.
Get it around, okay. Okay.
So Geraldine, I also want to, if, so still, if there's a call in the village, because it's not your PSA, you can't respond with your paramedic on your ambulance there unless George, Heritage Ambulance is already out on the call, is that?
Typically, yes.
That's, you can't, okay, okay. Any other?
So it sounds like we're still going to have a Campion involved three, four years from now, even in the best situation? Am I understanding that correctly? A Campion-like organization is still going to have to be involved because we're not going to get full ALS coverage through Southbury Ambulance alone.
Does that, I mean, I'm trying to understand this.
That's correct.
Asking the question.
So, and it's my understanding, new information, and Jeff could verify this with Dispatch, that right now Campion's is not providing us 100% with the second medic. I heard the number was 85%. I asked for further information and I haven't got it, and I said new on the hopper, which is relevant information, it's information that should have went back to the EMS committee because that's something that is part of the contract, we would have brought it before. So it's kind of unofficial, but it's, I think it's new, I think it's information that's worthy in this conversation. So why would you not want a medic here in town if you're not getting the second medic but only 85% of the time?
Okay, so I, I have not seen that information or received that information.
Well, I haven't seen anything in writing. It was made, a statement was made, and I said, well, the contract says we're supposed to get a medic and a backup. So I need this information because it has to go somewhere.
Could you tell us who made the statement?
Chris Gorilla.
Okay, I'll talk to, I have not heard that.
Sorry, Chris, throwing you under the bus.
Well, I?
But it's information we need to, it's information that we need to have, it's information, those kinds of things should come back, come to the EMS committee. It's, you know, a reason for having Dispatch involved, a reason for having the police department involved.
Yeah, I've not, no, nobody has given me that information so far.
Medics are hard to come by. Okay, we call for mutual aid for Campion's and Waterbury, and they're nowheres to be found. A comment was made here a month or so ago about Oxford being in town. Oxford's doing quite a bit of mutual aid right now because the commercial services aren't available. So if you're not fending for yourself, ain't nobody going to fend for you.
So what happens in the 15% of the cases where Campion can't provide a service?
Well, if they have a full car, they'll send the full car, okay? Otherwise, you go without the medic.
You just deal with it as best you can.
And you get to the, right, you follow your ABCs. You do what you were trained to do. When you get to the hospital on your way, you, you give the report, this is what we're incoming with, and, and they prepare accordingly.
Do you have something? What's the, your application to OEMS for the MIC upgrade, for the medic upgrade? What is the status of it to your knowledge? Is it submitted? Is it in? Is it waiting?
My MIC upgrade is sitting on Gene Speck's desk waiting for a letter of approval from this body.
Okay.
Jason, you look like you're thinking.
I'm always thinking.
There's a lot to think about.
See the smell coming out of his ears.
Do, do you want that information from, to get that information officially? That's, I'm just asking the board, that's the first I've heard of it.
I don't need that information.
But, but, but the same thing could apply with, okay, so the second medic isn't here, how many times are we asking for a third medic? We're getting a third medic some of the times and we're not. I mean, there's times here in the afternoons, we're seven deep. This is, this is a geriatric community, we're on the higher end of ALS need. Why would you not want the higher level of service at your fingertips as much as you can?
Absolutely.
I'd be willing to support the bid. I think, even though it's not perfect, and I can't see how the future is going to play out with any kind of precision, it seems to me that this is going to provide better service to at least some of the folks in town. It doesn't cover Heritage Village particularly well, but at least some folks are going to benefit. And I still have a question about the, the $60,000 and if that's going to create a problem with Tinley and bidding, you know, giving something away without a bidding process. I'm concerned about that, and maybe that's something I shouldn't be concerned about, but I, but I am. I know, Mike, you're saying it's not an issue, but I'm not so sure.
The $60,000 is not an expenditure.
Right.
It's not, it's not an appropriation. What, what it is, is it's a decrease in revenue. So, you know, I'm trying to think of another.
So you think you're okay with it?
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's just, we're just not getting, we're not getting as much money as we got, you know, last year. It's not, we're not affirmatively spending any money. We're not giving Southbury Ambulance this money, it was never coming from us in the first place. It's coming, you know, it gets billed, and we're just not getting reimbursed, is what happens. My understanding of the, which I'm trying to understand, but, you know, that's how I understand it works.
But in the meantime, we're providing an enhanced service to our residents.
Yeah.
And that's why I, I?
And by the way, and I would make the case, Judge, one, we're providing enhanced service potentially to all of our residents, including those in Heritage Village. You know, so I think that's been made pretty clear by our, by, you know, our two, two of our service leads here in town. I do think, and to my point, I'm not a lawyer, but my point of, of saying that was, our town council has had numerous opportunities and has raised many other concerns, and we've talked, we've been talking about bid policy with them two separately. Never did the two meet, those two issues meet, so I don't believe that would be an issue. And to Jason's point, it's a, it's not, it's a saving, it's a revenue issue, it's not about, you know, anything else.
I just don't want to see the town get into, into trouble down the road because we did something to favor one provider versus another without going through a process. I'm concerned about that.
I don't think we're favoring.
I don't think we're okay on it?
I don't believe that's the case with, with this situation, like you said, Jason, we're not, which is a loss of revenue. If we were to say, okay, provide us with paramedic, and what would the RFP be? That, that would be an RFP.
And also, we don't, we don't control the medic, you know, upgrade, we don't control the ALS, you know, license. That's not up to us, that is a state issue, all we are doing, so we are not giving it to someone. All we are saying is that we are supporting SAA's application for the upgrade. So we're not, you know, we're not in control of, of that, so it's not a service to the town that we have full control of.
Justin, do you, yeah, do you, Justin, do you, I, I, so I saw you reaching for the mic and I'm not sure if you have some?
No, I don't have any other concerns, but even if it was a biddable service, we specifically put into the bid policy that professional services can, we can waive the bid policy for those. We're not talking about widgets here, so.
And I would also like to just add to the point of feel-good or whatever, the reason for supporting them is because we feel good. It's not about that. These people have spent countless hours educating, I know me personally, I've gotten so many documents from, from them to read and understand the situation that I, I'm more confused probably than I was in the beginning. But they've gone the extra length to educate us, it's not like they've tried to hide anything. So there's more, and, and their record speaks for itself.
That's awesome. I, I know there, that, make no mistake about it, this is a serious business and it is worth having lengthy discussions. We obviously have tried to restructure an EMS committee in a, in a better manner. I had brought that out a long time ago, I asked about it, and, and it is controversial, but it is also my job to bring out the controversial questions for discussion and make informed decisions about that. And sometimes you do have to be the, the bad guy to get that out and get it understood because I think this is one particular area that is very complex and very important. And I, I think our understanding is much greater than it was, which rightfully should be, to make, to make the decisions. And, and, you know, I, I think that's part of this process and making sure we don't do things too quickly or too, I know you're not too quickly, but make sure it's done right and, and we understand it, so.
If I may just bring to point, you talked about an RFP to see how much it would cost to have an embedded medic. You have responses from that. You know, we had responses for that, for an embedded medic. Wasn't that Danbury Ambulance or?
Well, Western Connecticut.
Western Connecticut, about between $400,000 and $500,000.
No, I don't think it was.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, it was pretty pricey.
It was about the same price as?
So.
Let's not digress.
So I think at, at this point, I'd like to just thank Geraldine and George for all their time and numerous meetings and questions and providing us lots of detailed information to learn about this process. And thank Dan for his analysis and taking the time and looking at this from a different perspective and providing us some claridney and sound judgment concerning the financial situation and those issues that were raised. I, I think at this point, we've been at this a very long time, and our community wants a paramedic in town. This first step is not the perfect solution, it is not the end step. It's a step along the process to enhance a service, to be able to provide better service for our community and provide better service over time with continued enhancements over time. So at this point in time, based on all the information that we've received and analyzed and reviewed and discussed for many, 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 many hours, I'm comfortable supporting the upgrade. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that the town of Southbury, to the direction of the Board of Selectmen, provide a letter of support for, in support of Southbury Ambulance Association's application to OEMS for the MIC medic upgrade.
Second.
May I just second it? Any discussion on the motion? A call to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition, any abstention, and it carries. We'll get that out. Okay. Under new businesses?
Jeff, and I, I do this quite begrudgingly and with a little bit of hesitation, which I don't usually have, but I think it's something we do need to, to discuss. I'd like to make a motion to add under new business, discussion regarding the allegations against the first selectman.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it for discussion among our board begrudgingly. Okay, begrudgingly.
So I've, I'm in and?
So the?
Oh, we have to vote, sorry.
What's that?
Yep.
That's right. So the motion before is to, this board is to discuss the allegations against the first selectman that have been made from Dr. Ruby O'Neil. Any discussion on the motion? You want a discussion?
I would, I'd like to, I'd like to discuss, that's what we're, I have a?
To put it on the agenda.
To put it on the agenda, yeah.
Okay. So we're upon the agenda, so?
Yeah, just to put it on the agenda, I, I do, and, and there's a reason why, why I want to put it on the agenda. The, you know, we were all contacted about this when it first came out, and I am?
So why don't we put it on the agenda?
Well, okay, that's fine.
A call to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Well, I'll abstain and just? Aye. Well, I'll abstain and just, obviously I have to recuse myself from it.
Yes, sir.
I'll call the vote.
Aye.
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 George?
I'll abstain.
Any reason?
Can't just abstain.
Okay.
I'll just say no then, because I don't think, I have reasons for saying that and if we get into the discussion, we'll get into that.
The four are in favor. George said no, for the record. Okay, that is to the agenda. Under new business, pool task force. I just want to let you know, I'm gonna, I want to put together a task force, a small task force of people so it doesn't get too complicated on the pool. We have the, I don't have the people listed with me. I apologize. I don't have it in front of me. I'll get that out to you. But the top of the list was Maria Tapira, that she's on there. She's agreed to be on there. Looking for Dan Colton to be on there. I'll get someone from the Board of Finance, about five people, to work with the engineering company to get an idea. It's kind of interesting. It's interesting, their perspective, because we have such a great swim program in Southbury, which I think would lead us to a pool that's might be different than other communities. So I'm going to put that together. Get a task force so that as that engineering comes in, we can keep that moving forward. So you, and we'll keep that on the agenda so that we get that pool going.
Great.
All right. All right. Okay, so I guess on the, next on the agenda will be your discussion. I'll recuse myself from the discussion. I've had Jennifer, here's my pro time, you can, go ahead and cheer her up.
Do you want us to have this conversation here?
You can have it anywhere you want.
Okay.
So I made the motion and I said I did it begrudgingly and so we, the reason why I felt like we need to discuss this is because publicly, some of us have said that we should discuss this. The allegations are serious. I think we all take them seriously. And as a Board of Selectmen, one of the powers vested in us is the investigation of issues such as this, allegations such as this, section three ten A of, of the Charter. Do I, I wasn't there and we've heard it. Right now, this has been a, he said, she said, as I, as I was quoted as saying. And I think for the first selectman, I'd want to, and I think one of our speakers, the Republican public comment said it, I'd want my name cleared if it didn't happen. And if it did happen, as representatives of the town of Southbury, we have a responsibility to find out if it did. I, you know, I've been asked by residents, by the press, about my thoughts on this. I, I, you know, I think it's important too. The allegations weren't just about antisemitism. I think that's been the headline. There were some, there was another allegation in, in there, in there as well. But as, as the Jew on the Board of Selectmen, I've been asked if I think that the first selectman's anti Semite. And have I experienced antisemitism from Jeff? No. Have I at times in this town experienced antisemitism? Yes. More often than I think any of us would like to admit. And it's not just about antisemitism. You know, we, we pride ourselves, First Selectmen talks about it a lot, about being the town that said no to the Bund. But that doesn't mean that, that those same sentiments don't exist in those who live in this town. Sentiments of hate and bigotry and racism against whether it be your religion, the color of your skin, where you were born, your gender, your sexual orientation. From a timing standpoint, there have been questions about why the timing now. And, you know, now, and I take off my Jewish hat, which I never take off, but I put on my Democrat hat. This is an odd situation for Democrats to be in when, when two people from the other party are having, you know, are in this situation. I don't view this at all through a political lens. I view this through a moment lens. Our nation and even our town, the town next door to us, which recently had a major issue of antisemitism with swastika found in Nonowak High School, an issue of disgusting racism that happened at our own high school a couple of weeks ago. The incident that happened at Janey Pierce Park within our term, I think in our first term. I just believe that for us to not talk through this, not to get to the bottom of it, would be shirking our responsibility. And I also think it would be shirking our responsibility, not only to the residents, but to Jeff. If it did happen, then we will learn that. If there's corroboration, we will figure it out and we'll figure out what those next steps might be. If it did not happen, we'll move forward and we, you can move forward with a, with a clear name and, and clear head. I would not have a clear head not doing anything, especially because on both sides of this, of the political aisle, we said we would, many of us said we would, that we'd at least figure it out. I don't know, by the way, that, you know, and the, and the Charter doesn't give guidance on how we go down that path of an investigation. And, you know, my understanding is that potentially town council cannot play a role in that. I don't know the clarity on that. There's been, you know, I'm, I'm not sure.
That, that has been told me they cannot.
Right. So the question is how. But for us to simply have a he said, she said amongst residents go back and forth and just sort of wave our hands saying, well, we don't know. To me, in this time, we can't, we can't ignore the allegation either way, whether it is true or false. None of us were there, at least I don't believe. I was not there at least in, in, in those situations. And I've been very hesitant to, to speak out about this because I don't want to, as a Democrat, try to make this political. But as a Jew, for me to say nothing, I, I just can't. For me to not at least look into this. And like I said, I have never experienced antisemitism from Jeff.
Thank you, Mike.
But the allegation is there. And for us to just say, you know, we throw our hands in the air to me, isn't, isn't something we can do. I don't know what the path forward is in terms of investigating it and trying to find the truth. But I think we have to try to find the truth.
That's why I sent the email to the board and to the two parties and to the press, because I felt too that we needed to address something when you have two high profile people in our community making allegations. I will however say that in my entire time of knowing Jeffrey, he's, as the only female member of this board, he has never made me feel any less adequate or respected. So that is my, you know, I'm, I'm a woman. I'm not Jewish, but I'm a woman and that could have happened. I've read the letters and the editor. I hear the comments today from people who are very passionate about it. And I honestly don't know how to resolve this situation. I wish we didn't even have to address the situation, but it's been put in our laps and it makes sense to talk about it, to, to do what, whatever we think we should do about it. I, I thought, I thought your, your friend's comment, Mrs. Sullivan, it was, it was very nice. It was very poignant. I think Scott, I mean, it, you know, it, it can look very political. I don't think it was political, but it can give that appearance. So I, I even, the day after we got the letter, I called up Ruby and I clearly said to her that this could look badly for me, because I have talked about running for first selectman, Jeffrey, and I know that rumor is out there. So I just wanted to be known that this was not anything that I had anything to do with, nor would I act inappropriately moving forward based on anything I may choose to do in the future. I believe, I called Jeff up. I said, you should be shouting from the rooftops your innocence. You should be writing a statement down. He's going to handle it the way he wants to handle it. We can't control how he's going to respond to it. We can only control how we're going to respond to it. I think this conversation is the first step.
You're running it.
Sir.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
You know, I've looked through the Charter as well. I, I don't, I don't know what the path is here. You know, I've been on boards and commissions for about fifteen years. I just don't remember something like this coming up. So I don't really have any history or basis to work off here. I'm not sure what we should do. I think, you know, obviously it should be discussed and both parties heard and Jeff should certainly have a chance to, to clear his name.
So I've struggled with this and trying to determine what I was going to talk about tonight. I usually have some clarity on what I want to talk about and, and I don't at the moment. So one thing I, I can say unequivocally is Jennifer's comment about her having nothing to do with this is absolutely correct. And I know that to be a fact. This is a difficult situation. These are very difficult and serious allegations, which obviously should be taken seriously. Like others have said, I have not experienced these sort of behaviors from Jeff. What to do about this? I, I don't have, I don't have a clear answer to that. Yes, the Charter allows investigations. On the same token, I've received emails from a number of people saying, don't spend any of my money investigating, you know, people, you know, we investigate every time someone starts making accusations and responses. So I, I don't know the best answer there. The only thing I, I do know that I think is important for this board to do, and we'll have to talk about what we want to do on the specifics, is I think we, as leaders of our town, should speak with clarity and strength as to the types of allegations set forth in the letter. And we should make it known to our community that as a board, we condemn that sort of behavior that has been alleged. That as a board, as leaders in our community, we condemn hate, bigotry, racism, antisemitism, hate in all its forms. And I think perhaps, though this has been brought about and, and, it's been brought to us and it's uncomfortable and it's difficult, I think perhaps we can turn it into a positive for our community. Mike commented on how he has not felt antisemitism from Jeff, but he has felt antisemitism from other people in our community. And that's unacceptable in our town in this day. And I know that from what I hear to also be the fact of certain minority groups that live in our town and others. So I, I think perhaps, if nothing else, we use this as an opportunity to engage in a discussion as a community on these topics. And, you know, there's so much divisiveness in our country right now, in our world right now. There's so much negative rhetoric. There's so much division and hate and people in their camps that it's sometimes difficult to discuss substance and, you know, be heard and get through on issues of significance. And I think perhaps it's important for us to use this as an opportunity to reject that. And that's primarily why the six of us are sitting here right now. Because four years ago, when we all ran for office, we ran on a particular type of campaign about you know, we, we were running against certain divisions that existed in our community at that time. And committed to a more positive, respectful, uplifting dialogue as leaders of our town. And I think that this is an opportunity to exemplify that. To show the people of our community that that is why we're here and that is what we want to be. And to, I, I don't know what form it takes, but our board somehow should make it clear what our board's position is on this type of rhetoric and on hate generally. And perhaps we should also find a way to encourage community conversations, awareness, and, you know, there's, everyone in our community should feel welcome. And as leaders of our town, they especially need to be able to look to us to feel welcome. And I think we need to make sure that we are getting that message to all of them, that they are all welcome in our community, no matter who they are, no matter what their background is. And if nothing else, I believe, I believe that needs to be part of our process going forward and how we deal with this issue.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason.
George, I know you didn't want to talk, but do you want to say something now?
Yes, I do. I, I know Jeff has gone through hell on this and I, I feel very badly for him. I know Jeff, I know he's not, he's not an anti Semite. I've never heard him say anything racist or any kind of negative comment about anybody. And I, I just cannot believe that Jeff would be perceived as anti Semitic by anyone, but apparently he's being painted with that brush. And, you know, one of the reasons I didn't think the investigation was necessary or appropriate is because we have no backup. I mean, it's just, it's a he said, she said kind of thing. And I don't know that it, I mean, I agree with what Jason's saying. We should maybe come out with a statement, you know, against the antisemitism in, in every form. Totally behind that. That's, that's something I could definitely support. What, now here, here's my, people have told me, don't say what I'm about to say, because they're going to take it the wrong way, okay? But I'm going to say it anyway. Now, when I heard the term, and I'll call it the J card term, okay? That's what we're all talking about here, right? I didn't know what it meant, really. I, I hadn't heard anyone use it before. Maybe it's just my ignorance of, of language. So I started to Google it, you know, the source of all human information is on Google these days, to see what it really meant and, and what the, what the connotation was. And I came to the conclusion that somebody could use that term in a non-antisemetic way and-
No, they can't.
Yeah, well, okay, tell that to Duke.
George, I'm telling you, I'm telling, I don't care. I don't care what some study said.
It's not a study.
George, I'm telling you that no, they can't.
I know people can be offended by it.
No, George.
So you, you think, you think Duke is, is anti Semitic?
I'm thinking and saying that, that whoever wrote that for Duke, yes, they are an anti Semite. I am telling you unequivocally that the term Jew card, the term bagel boy, which my son was called, those are anti Semitic remarks unequivocally. Those who question them have anti Semitic tendencies. And I'm unwilling to, to have that. I will have that conversation publicly. But if that's the conversation we want to have, that's the problem. You, you mentioned, George, maybe it's your ignorance. You're an extraordinarily smart guy. I've sat here with you for almost four years.
I've never heard the term used before, to be honest with you.
Jew card is an anti Semitic slur. All right, now-
Wait, Michael, can we let him finish his?
Sorry, sorry, Chris.
Well, we don't know for a fact that Jeff said the term. My limited research indicates that it can be used in a non-antisemetic way. I, there's, you can go on YouTube and you can find clips from Hollywood movies where the term is, is used in comedic situations. I personally would not use it, frankly. I, never having heard it before, I didn't know what it meant. It's not something I would ever think of saying. But I think it's possible that somebody could use that term and not mean it in a, in a, you know, ethnic slur way. I mean, if you want to go, I'll, I'll pull up the clips on YouTube and you can just see them.
No, I don't think that's necessary. I think it's already brought out something that we don't want to bring out. I mean, the purpose of this conversation is to be productive. So, we don't know- So we don't know if he said it.
We don't know.
We don't know.
But I'm saying, even if he did, it, it can be said in a way that's not meant to be antisemitic. I, I respect Mike's opinion on that and, you know, he, he's who he is and I appreciate that.
Okay.
And I, I came at this as someone who had never heard the term used before, didn't know what it meant. And it's, to me, it's like some, it sounds like if someone says, "Okay, I'm going to throw down the woman card or I'm going to throw down the race card." It's the same kind of connotation as that.
The woman card, the woman card would also be an offensive statement.
But I hear it all the time.
And it's offensive every time it's said.
I would, I would, are you, are you done?
I, I've said what I can say.
So I, and I apologize for getting emotional, George, about that because George and I have had a very collegial, even when we disagree, collegial relationship. This is personal. All right? I've said all along, I have not been in a room where I've heard Jeff say antisemitic things to me. All right? I said it, right, right at the outset. I said all along that none of us know what was said. I go back to Jason's point. George's remark to me is a reason why we need to help educate this town.
As we've just, as he has just educated himself.
And have an open discussion about that. Because saying those two words, that Jew Card is not antisemitic or can be used in an antisemitic context, I could say the same thing that the white supremacists who marched through Charlottesville screaming, "Jews will not replace us." Well, that sentence in and of itself is just factual. I don't think Jews are going to replace us. That's an antisemitic thing to say, especially when you're marching with tiki torches and your, you know, freaking khakis and white button downs, but your hoods are off now.
Michael?
I'd like to finish.
Okay.
So there's clearly, to Jason's point, education and conversation that needs to be had in this town. But the conversation that we need to have is, are we going to do nothing? Or are we going to seek advice to see what really happened? This conversation is important, by the way. This conversation is productive and important and uncomfortable and it should be uncomfortable. The six of us have, I believe, lived up to that promise we all made on the first day we sat here, that we would disagree but be respectful of each other. And generally, we have. I really do think we have. We've had serious disagreements at times, but in general, we've been more often respectful than disrespectful. So I, I don't know what the next step is. I don't think any of us do. We've never been here before.
So I would like to offer, if I may, I would like to offer that we, A, do some type of education of the community. But that has to be the six of us. Jeff cannot be excluded from that.
I agree.
He's innocent until proven guilty, as they say, as it has been said to us, actually. And if the majority of this board feels that we should move forward with an investigation, then we'd have to talk to town attorney on what he recommends, to whom he recommends us or something, recognizing that we may never get to any...
So if I may, the town attorney said that he could not investigate for obvious reasons, that the town would have to hire an attorney to investigate if you want to do that. And then the town would have to hire an attorney to defend it.
And I'm not, I'm not...
If that's the way...
Yeah, I'm, I listen, I don't doubt our town council's, you know, recommendation. What I'm just, what I'm not clear, yeah, yeah. What I'm not clear about is, is the rationale that the, the, the claim is not against the town, the allegation's not against the town, it's against an individual. The town council doesn't represent the individual, he represents the town. So what I'm, and I don't know, I'm not a lawyer, like, again, so I, you know, I'm just not clear on that. The other thing is, are there other bodies in the town that would allow us to investigate without, I understand the concern of expense, et cetera. I think spending a little money to find out whether or not this happened or not is, is a reasonable thing to spend money on.
Is this something the ADL would do?
I, I don't know. That's the thing. I'm not, yeah, who do we reach out to, to, to do that? I don't know.
I don't know. I, I...
And I don't want to spin wheels and I don't want to waste town money, but these are serious allegations. We all agree on that. And to just say, "Well, we talked about them and we're going to do a, you know, some, a couple of community events to, to stand up against racism." And by the way, the whole concept of a statement from here, while I support it, it saddens me deeply that this body would have to issue a statement saying that we don't support antisemitism and we don't support racism and we don't, you know, and we stand against it. They are, to me, they're, it's, it's analog to thoughts and prayers. You know, it's just not, to me, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's a style over substance, for lack of a better phrase. But, so I just, I, you know, maybe it is. Maybe we, you know, you know, we do reach out for advice to an organization like the ADL to find out what we do. Again, they're not legal counsel, so I don't, I, I just don't know. I don't know if they, and I, you know, whispered to Jason, but public chair, you know, I don't know if this is, we have an ethics commission, but this isn't something that happened here during the, you know, during the operation of town government. Yeah, so I, I just don't know. You know, I don't know what the charge of the Ethics Commission would be, if they would be a body internally that we could go to, to, to go through it.
Doesn't seem like an ethics issue.
It does not appear that anyone has alleged and, we'd have to read the Ethics ordinance to see if that's going on.
So here we are.
I think...
I would s...
No, no, go ahead. No, I won't think. Go ahead, you go.
I was gonna...
It's okay. Forgive me.
I was going to suggest that we hold this and at the conclusion of our meeting, continue the discussion in executive session if Jeff approves of such requests.
I'll second it.
Jeff has the opportunity to...
Right.
Not have any discussions in executive session.
With Jeff present?
That's up to Jeff.
Okay.
Jeff's a member of the board, so...
I don't have a problem with being in public. I've conducted myself for a very long time in a certain way. I'm concerned that simple allegations has been made to a number of political people at the federal level, Clarence Thomas, Kavanaugh. I'm also concerned that people can make these allegations about other people, looking for substance to back it up. So if it's not in executive session, when we come out, we'd be making a statement or an investigation. And if it's going to be an investigation, let's just put it out there and do an investigation. I can look anybody in the eye. And people who have come forward. And there's more about my conduct in my church and how my actions have been. You want the investigation, do the investigation. Do what you feel you need to do.
So I think we should, did you make a motion?
I didn't make a motion. I made a request as to whether Jeff objected to a discussion occurring, you know, determinations are made in executive session. I just suggested it might be fruitful to have a portion of the discussion in executive session, which Jeff can be present for, or, you know, that's up to him. But that's, that's his decision under FOIA, whether or not to allow an executive session on the topic.
So the purpose of the executive session is just to investigate?
No.
It's for us to talk.
Okay.
Let's be clear, no investigation's happening tonight.
Or without you, whatever you choose.
Why don't you do it without me? You want to do it without me?
It's up to you. But why don't we table this, move to table this to the end of the meeting?
I'll second it.
Your honor.
Sorry. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Extentions? Okay. I'll add it to the end after liaisons.
Okay. On the selectman's report, there's been some question about forming from a couple citizens the Energy Task Force. It kind of disbanded, there was no meetings, there was, everything was, you know. So I don't expect an answer here tonight. Just consider it for the next meeting. I mean, we have time, it's not...
I think the gentleman that would hear that last meeting, I mean, that was really interesting.
Yeah, I've known him for a while, yeah. So let's think about it, think about what do you think we, is something we want to do. You know, it just, nobody was doing anything with it for a while, so we have some people, but give it some thought. The Bedard letter, was asked to comment on that, we can't. The case is before the Workman's Comp Commissioner. The case is still open. And if you're familiar with the Workman's Comp Commission and rules, in these cases, the commissioner is the one that rules. If we would, you would like, I can have someone here, the appropriate people here, to discuss in executive session this particular case at the next, it's difficult to get them here for this and set it up. But they've penciled it in for the next meeting. I know, how many are going to be here? Do we have a quorum for the next meeting?
I'm, I'm going to be away.
I'd be here.
You'll be here?
I would be, I'm in town.
Do you go on vacation?
I'm going on vacation in the beginning of this, the kids, Amelia's spring break.
See, it's like you're, you're on vacation, kids are on vacation.
It's not really vacation, but we're going.
It's Region 15 week.
Yeah, it's also Holy Thursday.
It's all Thursday, I will.
Is it okay, you know, we're going to have the quorum?
I'm going to, I'm going to go to church. Sorry. I'm going to pass on board's selectmen.
I mean, as, as what's clear here, I won't be going to church, but, but, yeah, I understand certainly. You know, if, if there's not a quorum, we can't have me, between vacations and...
We're going to miss one, two.
Right, we still have a quorum.
You'll be here, we'll still have a quorum. George, you still be here?
I don't know. I don't know where I'm going to be.
The only thing I say is if I, if I, if I have this person here from insurance.
Can we do the first one in there?
Can I, can I suggest?
What's that?
No, I was gonna, that's what I was gonna say.
Let's see if we can get the first to make. Is it the first to make?
No.
First meeting. Okay. Okay, so let's see if we can, yeah, do it that time so we can have a, an understanding. Good news is, the water was back on at the library about two o'clock today. There was a leak. Did you know about that?
Didn't.
Sorry. There was a leak. Thankfully, they found it. It was before the meter. And I went over there and they were finishing up the coupling and it was actually on a little sidewalk close to the building. So that's been fixed. We had put porta potties out there and we're back in business. I was glad to hear it wasn't longer. We met with the HR services people today, get some information. There was a group and we will be getting that moving forward. We're going to start the meeting for a SWAT analysis and get that going. EDC interviews are continuing. We'll continue to work on that and hopefully just, we're good conversation and...
Yeah, first one was great.
Yep, we'll go from there. Roadwork has started up again. There's been cracked ceiling going on. There's a bleached up ceiling and we'll try to catch back up on that road program that the weather last year set us back and get those roads back up where we need to be. So we'll do that. Notice Proceed was out for East Flat Hill Road, so April 1st, so we're moving ahead with that. And we should be moving forward, hopefully. It'll look like they start and then they stop, but there's, they've got to move poles and build a driveway, but we're on, we're going. All right, reports from liaisons. George?
We did have a road study meeting. The five-year plan was reviewed again. Chip ceiling, we're looking at 28.7 miles this year. And part of that is catching up on 7.5 miles from last year. That didn't get done because of the rain. One of the big topics was the guide rails and the cost of the new guide rails. We're thinking that that's going to be a big cost. Right now, we're spending about a hundred thousand a year on that. And that's on all steel for the most part. If we go to, go to the wood type, then that's double or triple that. So it's, there's a question about, you know, where, what rules should we apply to the guardrails on which roads? Do we go wood across the board? Do we stay with steel? Do we pick certain roads for the, the wood and others for steel? I mean, I could get into problems. I don't know who even makes that call. Is that planning at the end of the day or do we have to make that call? I'm not sure. There's a couple of bridges in town that are having issues, as we know. There was one that collapsed on Plaster House, I think. I don't know, maybe Jeff, you could fill, fill us in on that one. But it was like a four by four foot hole. It was five feet deep, I think, that just suddenly appeared.
It's been moved up in the program.
Lost a couple of cars.
Like Oak Tree Bridge was moved up. But, yeah, it was one lane and they filled it in and they plated it. I have not been down there, but they, you know, they've got to get through wet...
Near Jeremy Swamp.
Yeah, Ichabod.
Extension.
Yeah.
It's near Jeremy Swamp. I think Jeremy Swamp is another issue that's come up because...
Yeah, down by the dirt part, but they'll get that, they've got to go through wetlands, get the design together and get it straight.
There's a question about whether the town pays for it like we did on the Oak Tree Bridge or whether we go through the state funding and maybe it's cheaper to go through the town. I mean, you guys will figure that out. The other question that came up is on River Road. And we're talking about an engineering study to figure out what it's going to cost to repair that road. And it does need repair. But before we can do that, I think somebody needs to make the decision as to how wide the road needs to be. Because that's going to drive the cost in a huge way. It could, could double the cost if we make it at the normal 26 feet. Right now, it's not that width. Planning was at the road study meeting, Dolores and one of the planning alternates was there, Bob Harrison. They didn't really comment, but I don't know, how do we make that decision? I mean, that's going to drive the cost. And who, who makes that decision? Do we make it? Does planning make it?
That's an interesting, because I was so involved for 18 years in wetlands where there was a number of roads and projected, you know, roads going in. The pros and cons of, of the width of the roads. And I think what you're going to find is it, it's kind of, kind of, it may bear, it may come down to, on that road, kind of what the traffic count is. I think the traffic count is something we'd have to look at.
It's heavier than you might think.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. So if there's a high traffic count, it may be, the, the need is to go to that width. So I, I don't know, but I think that would be something that we'd have to look at. So, I, I don't know, but I think that would be something that we'd have to look at.
So, should we form a committee to do that?
No, I think we'll let, leave it up to Public Works and make a recommendation and, 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 again, the problem is mo, is not, is there's one piece of the road that is water on both sides. I think you'd have to get some input from some people on wetlands about, you know, you're, you're actually, you're, it's hard to even fill it because, but Justin, you've got, we know.
So, during your predecessor's term, Ed's term, he actually pulled a group together to talk about that road. I don't know, was anybody here on that besides me? I was on there as a board of finance member. And the intention was try to get some buy-in from First Light and the satellite people. Because at that point, the estimate to do that road to today's standards was somewhere in the neighborhood of $8 million.
That's why I bring this up because it's a big chunk of money we're talking about and the, the width decision could double that cost.
Yeah. So, it's something that, it needs, it needs some eyes.
By the way, the Comcast people, I understand, are putting in 15 more dishes up there.
18.
18 more, okay. I see you corrected.
Yes.
At least that's the talk. I don't know if that's been settled officially.
Coming before the commissions. There's, I'm just bringing it out. There's going to be, it's about eight, it's 18 plus more reserved for more satellites. And there's a, before ZBA, I think it is, for the security fence that goes around it. So, that's coming before and they're actually getting the land from the, I think it's FERC or the First Light. And that will be being, you know, it'll be more in our grant list and it's about, I think it's, it, it's quite an operation. But the good thing is there's not a lot of wetlands there and it's a pretty quiet satellite, you know, they just.
Take one or.
It knows a little bit once in a while.
Brought up back then is that with that kind of a sticker, do you, do you carry the road through the way it's carrying right now? Or do you cut it off in between the Silver Bridge and South Flat Hill? If you look at the map, there'd be a couple homes affected. But it's, it's a big, it's a big issue. It's going to take, take some thought.
And I, I would just, Justin, I think you'd agree, we don't want to take this conversation too far on that.
No. Not tonight.
Not tonight. But I'll, I'll, I'll speak individually with board members on that topic at another time. Anything else, George?
Yeah, there's a lot of things going on. We didn't have IT staring, but there was a Region 15 space study meeting yesterday. And I have the report. I sent everybody a copy of the Malone McBroom. I don't know if you got it in your emails. You probably did. It's pretty detailed. But I will say that there's not a lot more information in this report than we saw in previous reports. And there's been a lot of time spent since the last reports have come out. So, I'm looking at it and saying, well, what did we really gain? This, this group seems to be kind of in a stall mode where nobody wants to take the leadership role and, and make some decisions as to what we really need to do. And there are some hard decisions that have to be made in Region 15 and it's not our job to sit here and debate those, but, you know, somebody really needs to move that ball forward. Now, we do have a new superintendent. Maybe he'll move the ball like at the sense that he's, he's more active than the previous superintendent. But we have issues and they're going to be expensive to fix, I think. I mean, we have a school that looks like it, it needs to be replaced soon in Gainfield. I don't know how much longer that, that can even continue on. And we also have a lot of schools that have the portable buildings that are built and they were built for, you know, three to five years and some have been there for like 50 years. So, that's an issue that, you know, everybody wants to take them down, but if you do, then you don't have enough space. Piled on top of that is.
The kids like the portable classrooms.
Well, they're air conditioned. But combined in that, we've lost about 1,000 students in Region 15 since the peak. So, you've got the situation where we need probably, I hate to say it, but we probably have to do some construction somewhere somehow in a, in a enrollment decline. So, politically, nobody wants to step up and say, yeah, let's do this, you know. It's a very tough situation, I think. We did have a tax abatement meeting also and the plan there is to present it to the board of finance. There are conclusions that the group has made or at least recommendations. They can't obviously do anything on their own. So, that's going to be presented probably in, at the next board of finance meeting, I think. But honestly, I don't know if they can get through everything at one meeting. There's just so many different aspects to this. Even you got three major programs. You got the seniors, you got the veterans and then the, the big one is the PA 490, which is really complex. So, I don't know if they'll get through it. We'll see. But then, once, once they fight through it, then it'll come here.
So, you think it is going to be Monday on the board of finance's agenda? Because I know Bill Tolle had mentioned he thought it might go to May.
Well, I've got the slides that Bill wants by like tomorrow. So, I have to kind of crunch the slides into PowerPoint. We'll see how that plays out. Maybe. It's up to John Michaels in the end if he wants to do it or not.
Yeah, I think, frankly, I think that, I think with the new superintendent, I think we're going to, we'll be moving forward. Give them a little more.
Some tough decisions that have to be made.
Down on the ground and I think we'll, we'll get there. Anything else, George?
No, I'm good.
Jason? Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem. EDC has not met. IPAC has not met. Committee to Study Town-Owned Properties did meet with another commercial brokerage group at Waterbury, the Goddard Group. I was at the EMS committee meeting. I missed it. So, they are trying to have another meeting, I think, not this next week, but the week after. So, the work continues. So.
Jason?
I did not have any meetings. I did bump into Scott earlier, I think sometime last week. I'll just mention that he is continuing to work on the after-action review, which is near complete for our review.
Planning Commission did not meet. Neither did the Strategic Planning Commission, but I did attend the joint meeting of the BOE and the BOF and it was exceptional. I really think that the, the board of finance was pleased with what the new superintendent Josh Schmidt had to present and their feedback was good. They felt it was transparent and, and I think a lot of their questions were answered. And they voted unanimously to adopt their budget to the Board of Ed. Sorry.
No, it's okay.
Your thunder. Sorry.
Nothing from P and R. We talked about EMS. They don't need to. Yeah, Region 15, the, the big news is that, yeah, with, there's been very good feedback, especially on the transparency of the presentation of this budget and clarifying some of the issues. There's been a lot of concern in town about the reduced enrollment with rising, you know, costs. And I think the superintendent did an extraordinary job. I did not get to attend that, but I watched, I watched it and then spoke to a bunch of board members. Did an extraordinary job explaining why. And I think really satisfied pretty much everyone in the room, other than what potentially. But the, the budget that's been approved to put forth is 2.48% increase. And I encourage anyone to go to the Region 15 website. It's there for all to see. And there's a detail, then a summary version of the presentation and it's, it's worth looking at.
Just to let you know, the board of finance, remind your, the public meeting to finalize the budget next Thursday at 7:00 PM. Room 205, that's April 11th, just so you know on your calendars. Okay?
Just note that I, I talked to John. I won't be there. I'm leaving that day, so I will be away on the 11th.
Okay. Well, I think we can.
Guys will figure it out.
Yeah, we can figure it out. Okay. Any other business? Other business? Are you going to enter into executive session?
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss a personnel, personnel issue concerning the first selectmen.
I'll second.
May you second. All in favor?
Aye.
Both?